Okay. All right, so good morning, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order at 9:05, I think, 9:06. And if we could start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is behind us. Thank you.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so roll call. Let it be known that all the commissioners are here and present today. And are there going to be any agenda changes?
No, there are not.
Okay. Peterson, yeah, I'm gonna ask you to pull that forward, so we'll all hear you better. Okay, so we are gonna go to public comment now, and this is for items not on today's agenda, and looks like you're up, Mr. Stoughton.
(speaking Spanish) I'm unprepared to be here today. I was gonna sleep in, but then I got a phone call at 6:10 this morning, and another one at 6:45. Since I was up, I decided, well, I wanted to come see your lovely faces and participate. Bichelli wants me to speak up. So, unprepared as I am, let's try to reach some commonality here. Thomas Jefferson said that people should read the Bible, as it's the most widely-read book in the world, and today it remains the most widely-read book in the world, and perhaps we can learn something from it. I'm thinking of Deuteronomy, the seventh book of the Torah, and last book of the Torah, and the Old Testament. In Deuteronomy, Moses gives three speeches to his followers before entering the promised land. In the first speech, he talks about the forty years of wandering, and the trials and tribulations that his people had suffered, and he reminds them that we must listen and love. In the second speech, he tells them to obey the laws, the importance of obeying the laws, and he reminds them that they must listen and love. And in the third and final speech, he says, even if you lose the promised land, through hard work and devotion, penance, you can regain it, but you must listen and love. So, the common theme is to listen and love. I would ask you to do one of those, and it is to listen, whether you love or not is completely up to you. Time, how much time do I have left here? I usually have five minutes? No? No, I can just keep on going, thank you.
But you get to keep on going, limited.
Limited, limited. Yesterday, I was on the exercise cycle at the gym, and I was sweating away and having a good time, because it has a display there, and you get to race other people, and I'm bumping into them, and trying to cut them off, hook their wheel, and trying to run myself off the road, but it won't let you do that. So, after about thirty minutes of this, I got off, and my testicles were tingling.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stoughton?
No?
No, I don't want to even go there. I'm gonna tell you right now that if you're gonna speak on a public topic, it needs to be a topic that can be agendized at a later date, and this has nothing to do with agenda, so keep it clean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Darn it, I didn't get away with what I was gonna do.
No, you're not gonna get away with it with me.
Okay. We'll have to try Olivera. So, it reminded me of the fact that what might seem good is not necessarily a good thing, that there might be further problems associated with it, and that just because something might, in its, let's say, in its appearance, might be a good idea, in its actual, long-term consequences might be detrimental. So, that is the end of that, and I'd like to thank you all for participating today, as Latish would say, and that how wonderful it is to see you all, and thank the public for being here as well.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna get going.
Okay.
And enjoy your meeting.
Have a great day.
Rock on.
My name is Patrick Sullivan. I'm from Murfrees, California. I've been a resident up here since about 2007. I'm gonna comment specifically on responses made to my review of the draft environmental impact report.
Okay, I'm gonna, that's gonna be public comment when we get done with the staff report. Right now, it's for items not on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. We'll make sure that you get back up when it's time. Thank you. Is there any other comments that are not on the agenda for today?
Can I make a quick comment or question?
Yes.
Can that microphone be raised at all? I don't...
Bill, can you make it go higher?
Nope. Unless I grab it, but I can bend my knees.
What about right here? What about right here? Oh, it's getting the podium.
It's the slope. Oh, wait, there we go. How's that?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, technical.
Well, just 'cause it...
Is it okay now?
It's better now.
I won't knock it over. I'll try not to. Anyway, I'm not sure. Public comment. After looking at the state EIR, Santa Cruz's ERR, and an EIR written by Ascent for Humboldt County, I question the validity of this EIR.
Okay, so this public comment will be whenever we're done reviewing staff?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. I understand, thank you. Anybody else have anything that is not on the agenda today that they would like to speak to?
I have a quick question.
Then you need to come to the mic, and I'm not sure we'll answer.
Looking at the agenda, the only issue that was agendized was the ban option. Would it be appropriate to discuss draft regulatory ordinance?
Anything that's within the EIR or the ban ordinance can be discussed during public comment.
Okay, and not now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Brock Estes in Valley Springs. I'd like to speak, just in general, to the people that you, as a board, represent, because we've had a lot of meetings, and you're gonna have one today and tomorrow, when you're gonna hear people from both sides of an issue argue for their point of view. But taking a look around, I would say we have less than a half of one percent of voters that are here. It's a very small turnout. And the reason is that everybody else has a life to lead. I happened to come out of my garage today at 7:00 a.m., and my next-door neighbor came out at the exact same time. We were surprised to see each other, both walking out facing each other. We said hi, and we went to work on our yards. I did an hour's waiting, and then came here. He's still working. He's one of the retired people in the neighborhood, as am I. But a lot of the people, when we're out there working, we watch them leaving, and we know they're going to take their kids to the dentist, or soccer practice, or go to work, or come back. They've got full lives. They aren't gonna be here. They aren't going to be heard. You're going to hear from people on each end. But your job is really to find something that everyone can say, "I could live with that," because if we go all the way to another three-to-two vote, as the urgency ordinance was, and then each side says, "Well, who can I knock off so that I can get three-to-two my way?" That's not solving anything. If you can look and find a third way, and there is one, if you can find a third way that everyone could say, "I could live with that," and the vote turned out to be five-to-zero, that would be doing a great public service. Anything less than that, and you've really failed. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Oh, you're gonna come up and tell us how we're not gonna fail today, right? You said it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so is there any other public comment for items not on the agenda? All right, then we're gonna close the public comment, period, and we are going to go to our consent agenda items for the approval of minutes from the September fourteenth, two thousand and seven planning meeting. And I really like when it curves at the, so I can see everybody, this is hard. Does anybody have any changes on the minutes?
I just wanted to raise the question. I pointed out a couple of typos on the Planning Commission hearing procedures copy, and I assume by approving the minutes, we're not approving the one with typos in it?
No, the procedures document is not a part of the minutes.
Okay.
So if there's errors to that, we'll make sure those are corrected.
Great. I approve that we approve the minutes.
So, do any other commissioners have any changes?
No.
Okay, do I get a second, then?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five-oh. Okay, we are gonna move into our public hearings now, and we have 2016, appeal by Gregory Garner. And Peter, are you going to, we're gonna put those, delay those?
Yes, we have, due to the length of the expected hearing on the proposed ordinance, we have asked the appellants for the first two items, Mr. Garner and Mr. Gabay, if they would consider continuing their appeal to next hearing. They both agreed, so I think just a matter of recognizing that those will be continued to October twelfth is all we need to do on that.
Okay, so everybody recognizes the fact we're pushing those back, so we're okay?
I guess unless there's anyone here in the audience that was here specifically for those two appeals, those, don't see anyone, so it sounds like everyone got the message.
Commissioner Bichelli had a question?
Well, I've told Peter, but I didn't tell you, Lisa, I'm not gonna be here on the twelfth, so, for what that's worth.
Okay. So, we're done with item one and two. We're recognizing they're being moved to October twelfth, and now we're gonna move to item three, which is 2014-064, amendments to Title XVII, regulating cannabis cultivation and commerce. And Peter, you're gonna be the presenter on this?
Yes.
And we're gonna ask you to pull that mic forward a little bit, 'cause I'm having a difficult time hearing you, and I don't know about the rest of the people.
You can't hear.
You can't hear either? Okay, so, can you hear?
You can't hear me in your mic either, 'cause you talk all the way.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I'm asking, yeah, and I'm asking Peter to pull his mic in, so that as he gives his presentation...
You can hear the mic, but then you can hear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that okay? Does everyone hear me all right?
It's better when you're closer, like I was.
All right. Not used to having to hunch down over the microphones quite so much, but item E3 is a proposal by the county to amend Title XVII to replace Chapter seventeen ninety-five, the urgency ordinance regulating cannabis cultivation, with a new Chapter seventeen ninety-five. Before I get going further, I'd just like to introduce the people to my left. Gary Jacobs, the principal with Ascent Environmental, the consulting firm that we hired to prepare the EIR. Chris Muntank, senior, not sure what your title is, but he was the primary author of the EIR. And Tiffany Wright with Remi Moose Manley, our outside legal counsel. So, the proposal, as directed by the Board of Supervisors, is an ordinance that would ban cultivation and commercial activities, with the exception of the minimum amount permitted under state law, which is three, oh, no, I'm sorry, six plants grown indoors. The ordinance also does not include dispensaries, which are regulated under a separate ordinance, seventeen ninety-one, that is, will be taken up in the next item, item E4 of this agenda. A little bit of history, in December two thousand and fifteen, the then sitting Board of Supervisors directed staff to prepare a regulatory ordinance that would allow and set standards for cultivation of cannabis, both indoor and outdoor, as well as related commercial uses such as manufacturing, testing, and distribution. At the time, the Board also stated they did not want to revise the dispensary ordinance. Staff returned to the Board in February two thousand and sixteen with a draft, set of draft regulations, which the Board, after some modifications, established as the provisions they would like to see in the ordinance. Staff determined, and the Board agreed, that an EIR would be the appropriate SEQA document to prepare, and the county undertook that process in early two thousand and sixteen by releasing a notice of preparation on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, and hired Ascent Environmental to prepare the EIR. During that time, an influx of new cultivators arrived in the county, and because of this new cultivation activity, concerns were raised by the citizens and staff that interim regulations were needed to put in place, to freeze cultivation of what was existing until permanent regulations could be adopted. This resulted in the urgency ordinance, the provisions of which we are all familiar with, and which was adopted on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Under the urgency ordinance, over seven hundred and forty commercial cultivation applications were received, completely overwhelming every department involved in the cannabis cultivation regulation program, especially planning, code enforcement in the sheriff's office, but also public works, environmental health, animal control, and other county departments. The county is still processing those applications, with, as of yesterday, one hundred and eighty-four registrations issued, an equal number denied, forty-five have been withdrawn, and the remainder, about three hundred and twenty-five, still in some state of process. In November two thousand and sixteen, four new supervisors were elected, and shortly after they took office in January, new direction was given to staff to enact a ban on cultivation and commercial activities. After discussion with the Board, it was agreed that the county should continue with the preparation of the EIR and use it to adopt the ban, which is an alternative in the draft EIR. It is important to understand what the purpose of an EIR is, what it does and does not do. An EIR is an informational document. It is intended to provide the public and the decision-makers with information about the environmental effects of a project action that the county may approve or undertake. It does not dictate the outcome of the decision, but identifies impacts, potential mitigation measures, and alternatives that could reduce the environmental effects of the project. We are compelled under SEQA to look at and accept those alternatives and mitigation measures where they are feasible, but it's not required that we adopt any specific alternative. It doesn't dictate the outcome of the decision, but identifies the impacts, I was gonna say that. It is not an economic analysis, although economics may be used to make findings of overriding consideration, should the county choose an alternative that has greater environmental effects than the most environmentally sensitive one, or if it finds that mitigation measures are infeasible. SEQA is also a procedural law. Steps must be taken and notice provided as prescribed by the law. The draft EIR was issued on May first, two thousand and seventeen, and circulated for a period of forty-five days, as required under SEQA. The county received numerous comments, all of which had to be responded to in the final EIR. That document, the final, was released on September eighth. The draft EIR identified three alternatives to the proposed ordinance, a no-project alternative, which is doing nothing, in that we would continue to operate under the urgency ordinance until it expires in February. A ban was a second alternative, or a reduced zoning alternative, which eliminated the RR zone for commercial cultivation. The analysis in the EIR found that both the ban and the reduced zoning would have fewer environmental effects than the proposed ordinance. In response to comments on the draft EIR, a fourth alternative was added that could also reduce impacts. This was to increase the minimum parcel size for cultivation. The ban was identified as the alternative with the least amount of environmental impacts, because it would prohibit any cultivation activity that could result in environmental impacts. The areas found to be impacted but that could be mitigated are biological resources, cultural resources, water quality, and air quality in the form of greenhouse gases. Impacts identified as significant and unavoidable were air quality impacts relating to odors, as well as traffic. There are many comments that disagreed with the findings of the EIR, which is not uncommon with controversial projects such as this. One area of controversy is the fact that the EIR does not address what might happen should the ban go unenforced. As stated earlier, an EIR does not typically analyze economic impacts of an action. It's an environmental impact report. However, this EIR did reference the fact that funding could be eliminated by the ban, both from the lack of fee revenue from subsequent applications or renewals, and because the Measure C tax would not be collected. But in EIR, it's supposed to analyze the impact of the project, in this case, as proposed by the Board, a ban, not what would happen if people don't obey the law. An example would be if you're doing an EIR for a subdivision, if the subdivider fails to comply with the conditions of approval, that's not what you analyze. You analyze what's affected the project, and how the mitigation measures would reduce those impacts. To try to analyze the illegal, potential illegal activity that could occur would be pure speculation, and is simply not what SEQA is intended to do. The EIR prepared by the consultant has been reviewed by county council, outside council hired specifically to assist the county and planning staff. We found that the EIR meets the requirements of SEQA, provides a range of alternatives, and adequately analyzes the identified impacts associated with the originally proposed ordinance, and provides a comparative analysis of the alternatives. The draft ordinance, as directed by the Board, is a comprehensive ban to cultivation of both medical and recreational cannabis, as well as manufacturing, testing, and distribution. As I said previously, it provides for the minimum cultivation of six plants per residence, as provided in state law. It also contains provisions for the rehabilitation of existing cultivation sites to protect water quality, prevent erosion and contamination, and clean up unsightly debris and illegal structures. It should be clear that it does not require that the site be restored to its pre-cultivation condition, but to a usable and hazard-free condition. I've provided each of you with an errata sheet and an updated, clean version of the ordinance. There's also copies over here, sitting on the chair, next to the gentleman in the green shirt, for those who'd like to see that. Most of these changes are to the definitions and findings. There aren't any substantial changes to that, but I just wanted to make sure we went through, you know, the last couple of days, and identified some errors that we'd missed in making sure that the definitions were consistent with the terms in MACURSA, and other just technical changes. We can go through each of those if necessary, but I think it'd probably be better to hold off on that until after the public comment. It also included some recommended changes by individual planning commissioners, and comments that I received from them, so we can go through that later. Apologize for last-minute changes, it's just been a very busy time for all of us to try to, you know, get through this and get this hearing scheduled, to, you know, move it forward to the Board for a final decision. You have an advisory role to the Board of Supervisors. You are not confined in your recommendation to the Board, to the direction that they provided to staff, but are free to make your own recommendation. Any of these alternatives or variations on these are within the parameters of the EIR and within your scope of action. If you have questions of me or the consultants, we're happy to entertain them. I would recommend, however, that we don't get into the nuts and bolts of the specifics of the ordinance until after you hear from the public. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Is there any questions of the commissioners of clarification from Peter, or do we want to go right to public comment now?
One thing I'd like to mention, Peter pointed out the pile of papers over there. I have distributed to many of the people that were here at nine o'clock discussion points about Alternative Four, and there are more copies of that up where the agenda is on the lectern. Just mentioning that, so we don't have a lot of people walking around.
Right. Okay, thank you. Now we will go to public comment, so we were, I'm gonna be generous here today. I originally was going to say we're gonna restrict to three minutes, because I expected this room to be overflowing. It is not, and in an effort to give everybody time to be heard, I'm going to go to five minutes, because the room is not completely filled, and I think that everybody will be cooperative in getting this done peacefully and quickly, and the sooner we get on to discussion, the sooner we all get to go home and be happy. Ready? Thank you. If you don't want five minutes, we can go to three. Everyone's okay? Okay. Good morning.
Now appropriate. Yes, my name's Patrick Sullivan. I've been living in Murfrees for approximately ten years, and I'm gonna give comments specifically to the responses made to my review. I'm gonna go through this as quickly as possible, I should be able to in five. There were numerous responses that were raised to specific issues that were non-responsive, and when you look at the California Code of Regulations, it specifically states that responses, this is a quote, "There must be a good faith, reasoned analysis in response. Conclusionary statements unsupported by factual information will not suffice." And these are the issues that I'm going to raise. This is a SEQA issue. I'm not a lawyer, I'm an environmental consultant. Number one, the odor mitigation. The draft EIR provided no qualitative or quantitative measure of impact, and they gave me a quote, and it said, "Local residents have the perception that cannabis-related odors are objectionable, and as a result, odor cannot be mitigated." Are we to believe that perception is reality? Not in an environmental impact report. Thank you very much. Issue number two, the predictions associated with the LOS numbers. The DIR provided no demonstrated model. They provided no facts. I could not evaluate any calculation. I could not separate what issues, like workers, specifically contributed to their model, and how that impacted their decision. Totally, you cannot follow it, no factual basis, no documentation. I collected sixty-three summaries of harvest worker employment sheets from legal growers in the county. I provided all that information, I summarized it statistically, and I received not one response, in the written response, addressing all the data that was provided. I mean, they could've objected and said, "We don't believe you," whatever, or the county could've gone out and done some studies themselves to determine what the number of workers were really being employed for, in terms of the numbers. This was never addressed, and should've been addressed. They did give me, however, a citation that they did not use in the draft environmental impact report, and those two citations said that there were ten to fifteen workers employed during the harvest. If you look, I pulled the reference that they cited, and when you looked at that reference, it was referencing workers employed on facilities that had canopies up to forty-four thousand and fifty thousand square feet. This is not anywhere applicable to Calaveras County. In fact, the report they cited was for national data. So basically, the draft EIR had one interview in a survey, and they also stated that there were some random discussions involved with collecting information on the number of workers. There is no factual documentation to support this, ten to fifteen workers that were used in the traffic model. And in fact, you can't even, the traffic model was never defined, so the ability to separate traffic impacts from legal grows versus illegal grows, and what that total impact is, was totally impossible to ascertain in the draft EIR. And their responses to my questions were specifically non-responsive. The last issue really deals with the environmental impact of Alternative Two. First of all, based on the exact responses given to my questions, there is no difference in the environmental impact between an illegal grow and a legal grow relative to odor, none whatsoever, based upon how they've answered the responses. So, and there's no quantitative or qualitative model that establishes the difference. As a result, both illegal grows and legal grows have the same impact, and that is significant and unavoidable. Why is that important? It's important because one of the things that I provided in my review...
You have about a minute left, just giving you the...
...was a comprehensive review of the biological site assessments. As a result, the mitigation measure is now, for biological resources, it... As a result, the mitigation measure is now, for biological resources, it can be mitigated, which means we're not going to have a significant impact. That is not the case with illegal grows, because illegal grows don't have mandatory mitigation. As a result, we now have a circumstance where the environmental impact from illegal grows is greater than legal-
Okay. If I let you keep going, then I have to let everybody else in this room.
I will, I'm going to sum up right now. What that means is, is that-
But your time is up, I've got to call quits, otherwise I'm going to do this all day, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, please, we need to cooperate, and everybody stick to the clock.
Since this is an agenda item, can we, can I ask a quick question?
You can.
Dr. Sullivan, on odor, is there a scientific way of measuring offensive odor?
There is a way to characterize the emission characteristics of the compounds and actually do a non-point source model, which would be expensive, but no one tried to do any modeling.
But what does that have, I mean, isn't the perception of an odor what makes it an odor for the person perceiving it?
Well, that's certainly true, but is the perception, if I'm standing near a grow two feet away versus a hundred yards, the perception is entirely different. In fact, there may not be a perception of odor, so you have to look at how that can be mitigated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, Alternative Two is no longer the superior-
There's other people behind you that are ready to speak.
I'm just making one word statement, it is no longer the environmentally superior-
I'm going to cut you off, because if I let you go, I'm going to have to let the entire room, thank you.
Yeah, broadcast this again, I was going to wait and speak later, but I'm going to kind of piggyback on what he said. I'm not, I was at the presentation that this gentleman made on a Monday night about the environmental impact report. I know Supervisor Mills was there, I'm unaware if any of you were there or not, but there was one very important point in that study, which goes to what he was saying. And it's when they put some slides up, and it showed potential degradation to water supplies, almost nothing. And I said, "What? How could that be true?" So I asked a question. I said, "When you made that comment, were you assuming that all growers, legal or unpermitted, were in compliance?" They said, "Oh, yes, we assumed that they were all in compliance." I said, "Well, then that's a totally flawed study, that's garbage in, garbage out." Because we know that there are only a few hundred people who are permitted to grow, and yet there are thousands who are growing illegally, to assume that they are going to follow the rules and that thus there will be no environmental degradation is really ludicrous. So, that goes to what he was saying. Based on what I was saying before about voters, again, you're tasked with finding something everyone could live with, and not just one side saying, "Hooray," and the other side saying, "We'll get them next time." In thinking about that, I'd just like to kind of outline what I see as the six categories of people who are involved. I'm going to set aside the seventy or eighty percent of hard-working people with kids who really don't know it all, but who will exercise their right to vote, and they'll probably vote based on a sign they saw or something a neighbor said. But the people who are really involved, to me, break down into six categories, three on each side. On the ban side, first you have the people who are opposed because of moral or religious beliefs. Those people probably really believe it is the devil's weed, no one should smoke it, grow it, do anything with it. You're not going to change their minds because they really morally feel that way, and you just can't legislate morals, and you can rarely change people's moral stance. So those people are kind of hard to draw in. But then you have a second group of people, and I'm in this second group, who favor a ban and are opposed to a wide-open gold rush for practical reasons. Because we don't really want people moving into our neighborhood, putting up barbed-wire fences, and hiring armed guards, but we accept that if they're allowed to grow in residential neighborhoods, they're going to have to do that, because otherwise a carload of, you know, gangsters are going to come out and jack them. So, we practically, we oppose it because it's going to reduce in some way our quality of life. Now, there's a third group, and it's never spoken about, but I'm going to speak about it. And these are people who see a lot of people from outside the county coming into the county to get rich, and they just don't like that. They don't like the fact that they're going to have to give up any of their lifestyle because somebody else wants to get rich. Now, we've had people come into this county and get rich. We were rich in gold, and we were rich in timber, and that money didn't stay here. That money's gone. So, on the other side, on the pro, you've got some very wealthy people with money behind them who want to come in here and get rich, and really believe that they can make a million dollars a year doing this. They're obviously going to be very much in favor of this. Then you have a whole subset of people who have lived here a long time and grown out in the hills, and they're supporting their family, and frankly, I've had a supervisor tell me that most of their kids are on reduced lunch payments, you know, they're not making a lot of money.
Less than a minute to go.
Thank you. They're not making a lot of money, they're getting by. Those people, I believe, could come to a third way. And then you have the last category, which is really almost a feudal system, where you have some people with money who are setting up the poor people without money, they're paying for their permits, they're paying for their land, they're paying for their seedlings, then they get a bunch of money back and they rake some profit off of other people's labor. I'm not sure that those people would come to a third way, but I think that the people on the practical side who oppose it, and the people who are small growers who would just like to make a living, could come together in something that I think everyone could live with. I don't have the time to tell you right now exactly what that is, but I wouldn't want to anyway. I'd want you to think about it and come to it yourselves, because it's out there, and I know you can find it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Wilson, give me just one second here.
Sure.
Peter, when we're speaking to content, is it, do you want it specific to the EIR, or do we, are we okay with where, with the direction we're going in here?
I think the two are so intermingled, we really-
I can't even hear a word you're saying. Can you go turn those tractors off, please? Go ahead.
The two, the EIR and the ordinance, you know, alternatives are all intermingled, so I think we can talk to both, we should talk to both.
And then Annette is asking if you would please state your name clearly, and if you sign in, it's better for her when she writes up the minutes. If you, you can sign in after she starts the, or after you finish, so the clock doesn't tick against you if you want. We're not going to start the clock on you yet, hold on. Okay. We're ready.
Can I hand you letters? I tried to email them to you, I don't know if you received them before?
I got your email.
You got it?
I did, but since, can I, can we just go ahead and get a-
Anybody else can-
Can we get a copy of it, just so I make sure that staff has it? Thank you. Did all of you get his email?
I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name, so I don't-
Bill Wilson?
Bill Wilson?
Yeah.
Hi, Bill.
How are you doing?
Sorry, I did get it, yes.
No problem, no problem, I hope you did. I guess my comment is, the customer's always right, and that's evidenced by the outcome of this EIR. Ascent performed two EIRs that I know of, one is for Humboldt County, and one is for Calaveras County. Under Humboldt's EIR, a ban was not even considered, because Humboldt realized that a ban would do nothing but promote illegal and unregulated environmentally damaging cultivation. Regulation under the state's EIR, Humboldt's EIR, and Santa Cruz's EIR, regulation is the only alternative that is environmentally sound in anyone's mind, because with regulation, farms are inspected. Without regulation, farms aren't inspected, grows aren't inspected, pesticides are controlled under regulation. With a ban and no regulation, growing continues, and pesticides are used, animals are killed, the environment is trashed, water stolen, people don't live on the farms, they live in tents, shacks, whatever. Everything that everybody on the ban side complains about is definitely there with no regulation and a ban. It has been banned, not just in the state of California or the county of Calaveras, for how many years? Since nineteen seventy-two, if I'm not mistaken, by federal law, which says marijuana has no medical value. That's why it's a Class I controlled substance. If it's a Class I controlled substance and has no medical value, how can we have a regulation controlling medical marijuana? It seems redundant to me. It seems impossible that you can control something that has no medical value with a law, with an ordinance, with regulation. We taxed medical cultivation in this county. We voted on it, we passed that. That money balanced last year's budget. It now has provided a somewhat small and insignificant boost to our economy. Not much, just eleven million dollars. We're going to throw that out with a ban. Without your recommendation to regulate and continue to take those taxes, what we're going to end up with is a multi-million dollar cost that some citizens have called, "We need a state of emergency in Calaveras County," just like SISCUE. If we hadn't had draft regulatory ordinance seventeen nine five as written and approved by the Board existing in February of last year, we wouldn't have this EIR. Ascent wouldn't have had to collect another hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to make it a ban preferable. And in their conclusion, a ban is only preferable, I believe, and it wasn't mentioned, with a hundred percent compliance. Ladies and gentlemen, how do you get to a hundred percent compliance? We weren't able to get to a hundred percent compliance with regulation. Some people claim now, there's four thousand grows. How many of those grows are registered? Only seven hundred and eighty-four tried to register, that overwhelmed the county.
Less than a minute, Bill.
No problem.
Thank you.
In conclusion, I think what thing is, is we have an EIR that we asked for a ban. We got what we asked for, a ban's the best thing. If we'd asked for an honest representation from that company, I think we would have gotten an honest answer, and they would have said, "Regulation is the only way that we are going to combat this problem we have in this county, which is illegal, non-compliant, non-environmentally friendly growing."
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, would you mind signing in, please? You don't have to.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't want to.
Okay, that's fine.
But I am Chuck Keel, I'm a visitor from Tuolumne County, and everything you guys do, they're going to do. In fact, it's almost exact. You guys must talk all the time, which is okay, that's what you should do. Counties, adjacent counties should talk constantly. You should talk with the state constantly. I don't think that gets done enough, but anyway, we have five supervisors in our county, and four are pretty much against cultivation of marijuana as an industry. There is one for, and he is way for it. And he's young, and he wants jobs, he wants a billion-dollar industry in our county. I think it's about five hundred thousand right now, that's a half a billion, half a billion dollars. I think it could be a lot more if we really promote this, and we will have so many jobs. Anyway, so he's for it, and I don't know, here's a question for you guys. Did your EIR include businesses that also pollute the environment, such as the wineries, the cattle industry, the cattle, the logging industry, and finally, the mining industries? Most of the supervisors in these foothill communities, they're all, they're all investors in these types of industries. And some guy previously said, "Hey, wait a second, these guys don't want the competition with the pot growers, because there's going to be a lot of millionaires coming out of this industry." You know it, they know it, everybody knows that. They don't want to share it. That's my, that's my humble opinion, but I think it's pretty right on. And you know what? If your EIR does not include those industries that I just mentioned, then it's probably very biased and flawed. Chuck Keel from Tuolumne County. Thank you, guys.
Good morning. My name is Raymond Smith from Valley Springs.
Raymond, would you mind signing in, please?
Yes, I will sign in after.
You're awesome, thanks.
Thank you very much. I would also like to add the auto industry to that list, I believe they had some time in this county as well. We do have a, have a need to bring up the EIR, and whether or not it was for regulation or a ban to begin with. But for the primary reason I'm here is to establish support for an industry, but also for patients and individuals who cultivate cannabis who are not part of the industry. State law has changed, they added business code three, or two-six-zero-three-three, which says that not thereby engaged in commercial activity concerning patients, so individual patients, while they can no longer collectively or cooperatively assemble, they may still collaboratively individually assemble, and they're no longer part of the, what is considered commercial cultivation. We also have a concern for the industry and whether or not environmental concerns have been raised of, that were just brought up of other industries that were, had prior impact to the environment in this county, and sort of a baseline of whether or not there was a baseline set with the EIR. I would also like to bring up the punishments that are brought up for the, the alternative for the EIR. Alternative number four basically restricts or prohibits indoor and outdoor cultivation in residential. The ban alternative would restrict indoor cultivation to an alternative structure that is walled in, and that is in conflict with state law that says it, the marijuana can be outside in a outdoor area that is secured, and it's all in an email that I'll send to each one of you, as well as the clerk as well. We have Section Seven, Article, from Article Eleven of the California Constitution, which gives authority to these proceedings. But I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned with the fact that the state law has now changed to six mature and twelve immature plants per patient. That law has changed since June of this year from one hundred square feet to six plants, six mature, twelve immature, and any sort of conflict with that limiting them to a hundred square feet basically would limit, say, four plants that are five feet in diameter, it would limit a patient to four plants, which would in then conflict with what is allocated or authorized by state law. And I'm just more concerned with the state statutes and how they dovetail with the local statutes, and how that may impact the lives, you know, just how- statutes and how that may impact the lives, you know, just how people live, the relaxed environment. People come here to live a relaxed life and retire. I know my mom did. And the difference between an outdoor regulation and something that regulates an indoor activity is the difference between a warrant that lets people basically search the property outside your home.
You have less than a minute.
And inside of your home. And all of these sort of technicalities and we don't really think about the enforcement end of it when we're building the ordinances, but we really should think about how this is going to impact the lives of people who use marijuana not for recreation, but use it to live longer and feel better. And each one of these commercial cultivation sites that are regulated deserve a chance to demonstrate compliance. And the only way you can really demonstrate compliance is to become licensed. The licenser, we're going to have basically temporary licenses that are going to come very soon and be available, and that is a very good way to demonstrate compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't catch your first name, sir.
Raymond.
Raymond Smith, right?
Yes, thank you. And I'll have an email to each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Could you put speaker number two when you do that so she knows? Great, thanks.
By the way, while you're there, you might want to take a copy of the flyer. I'm right over here. Yeah, right by the thing by the... You got it?
Yeah, I can. Thank you very much.
It's in my face. Good morning. Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. I don't have any prepared comments, so I'm just kind of going to speak off the cuff here. Since we are supposed to address both the EIR and the proposed ordinance, just a quick comment on the final EIR in the response to comments. I think I'll probably have to write up something because it's too complicated and long to address, but it has to do with the conflict with the Rancho Calaveras special plan and the general plan that we discussed at the planning commission meeting last week. That was ignored in the response to comments. And basically, the comments 0335 and 0336 do not acknowledge that conflict in land use. So I will, you know, want to make sure that that's addressed. In fact, the statements in that contradict our own zoning ordinance and they imply that since cannabis operations are similar to agricultural operations and agricultural operations are allowed by right in RR, then they're implying that that is allowed by right in Rancho and in all RR parcels, and that's in the response to comments. And we do not agree with that. We think that's in conflict with the special plan and the general plan. So that's in dealing with the EIR. To get to the ordinances proposed and the alternatives proposed, we believe that there should be a compromise that people can live with, that more people can live with in this county. We think the alternative four comes as close as we've seen to something that might work for this county. I just happened to look at Commissioner Ladish's handout, and if you have that in front of you, I'll go over those comments individually. And I want to point out to people that this is for commercial medical cannabis, so this doesn't apply to personal grows for people that were concerned about that. So under the alternative four, number one, we agree with the idea of having organic, as certified by the state, organic cannabis cultivation for commercial purposes. I think that's a good idea to reduce impacts. Under point number two, we totally support removing RR, rural residential, from an acceptable zone for commercial cannabis. We think that's an absolute must. Number three, we support the proposed restrictions on RA parcels in that they would be at least 10 acres in size with 200-foot setbacks and that SEQA analysis would be required for all RA parcels, for all RA applications, excuse me. We think that would be a way to avoid the impacts to neighbors by bringing that all out for environmental review. For number four, we support any unclassified parcel going through full SEQA review and a change in zoning before allowing that under cultivation. And on number five, for industrial zone parcels, we support indoor cultivation only with odor filtration and the 200-foot setback. And number six, in the community center and community plan areas, again, we support only indoor cultivation with odor filtration. The appropriate setbacks is listed above, and also with only utility-provided water so that won't impact the water in these community areas. Number seven, I have some questions about, and number eight basically dealt with mitigation measures and we support most of those issues. Number seven, to go back to that.
Colleen, you got less than a third second.
Okay, okay, I'll wrap that up. Number seven, we just had a question as to why multiple permits would be a good idea on one parcel. So if that could be addressed, and did that mean different growers on one parcel or different permits for a single owner or grower? So that would be a second question on that. And the third question was if they were different growers, would that be not confusing or difficult to administer on the same parcel? So if those questions could be addressed when you're discussing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I live outside of Mountain Ranch real close to Jesus Marie and Whiskey Slide. I got burned out by the fire.
Could you state your name, please?
Pat Tomagen.
Pat Wha?
Tomagen.
Thank you.
Got burned out by the fire, and I want to say thank you to all the county employees and all the departments that I had to go through in trying to rebuild everyone, even though they were overtaxed and overworked. They were most gracious and helpful. As far as marijuana goes, as far as it's a drug, I think it's probably one of the better or one of the best drugs, especially compared to pharmaceuticals. But what happened to Mountain Ranch? I made a sign, it's pretty funky. Burned twice, first by the Butte Fire and then by the Calaveras County Supervisors who betrayed the community of Mountain Ranch. I remember shortly after the fire, when people started coming in, people were still dazed when they were saying pit bulls and lights. I think there are people who are growing responsibly. I think there are people who have lived in the community and they care about their neighbors and the land. I would say the majority of the people who are coming in are, I mean, they don't care. They do not care. They're arrogant. Recently, there was a bust of an illegal sewage, a smoldering trash fire. How many illegal grows are there? Yeah, I think there's thousands. I don't think it can be regulated. I would like people who support themselves to be able to do it, but this thing about influx of people coming in from all over, I would say they're bringing in a criminal element. There's a pit bull fighting ring near where I live, cockfighting ring. Let's see, what else? I'd say it hasn't generated jobs. Most of the people who are working have come in from out of the state and out of the country. Oh, boy. Let's see here. You know, because I have 35 acres and I bought it cheap and I have struggled to stay on it, does that mean because I have acreage that I have to live near somebody who uses pesticides and herbicides? Who have people coming in to work there who I really don't want to be around? Maybe one solution would be to allow the number of plants where someone could support themselves and their families, but not make hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars. I mean, I could just go on and on. Those people that come up here, they drive crazy. You know what Jesus Marie is like? Everyone says that. I really don't think they care much. Pit bulls. I know a lot of people want to support legalization, but they don't want to live near it. That's, to me, that's nasty. Mountain Ranch was a really nice community. It could have survived the fire, but it can't survive this. People are buying property. I know someone who has been part of the community. If I said his name, you'd respect him. Sold his property. He was going to get a balloon payment. The first buyer sold it to somebody else. I think that's happening a lot. I think there's squatters.
You have less than a minute.
Yeah, I don't know what else to say. I wish that people who are part of the community could grow it to support themselves, but the way it is now, it can't be regulated. I think a couple of years ago, there was 30 inspections and five were in compliance. And then what happens if you have a drought? People worried about their wells. You know, I haven't, I've been trying to just live on my property. And so I went to a Board of Supervisors meeting on over a year ago, and the people were pleading, saying, you know, "Please, I want to be able to bring my grandchildren up here." There's old people that, I mean, there's old people that, I met one couple.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay.
Can I have you? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. A minute. The sheriff is working his way up, and I think he wanted to make some comments.
Good morning. Thank you for being here and listening to all of us. It means a lot to all of us, not just one or two of us. This is a very, very important issue. It affects every single one of us. I live in Bar 20. We own free and clear our property. We had a box shipped to our house, a neighbor's house, that was full of $5,000 worth of marijuana with no return address. They're doing an investigation on it, and from what I understand with other people, that the legal growers grow just enough to get by and then they ship others out to the black market. I don't know this for a fact, but this is what I have been told. Now, the EIR that I read, I understand your studies because it affects only the marijuana issue. It doesn't affect the jobs in automotive. It doesn't affect anything other than the marijuana cannabis industry. That's what you were required to do. The issue that I have is that the people are saying, "Money, money, 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 money." How much money is enough money? There's never going to be enough money. There's never going to be enough money for what we're doing. What we're having a problem with now is the pro people are saying, "We got to make a living. We have jobs." I want to see the statistics on the employment of this county since cannabis has, the UO has been allowed. If we had never allowed the UO to happen, we would have much more strength, as Ms. Callahan said. Ms. Callahan had a great interview with the Tax Association with Al Segal the other night, and I watched it intensely twice. I understand her side of it, I really do, because she's looking at our budget. I'm looking at my future. I'm looking at my child's future, and I'm looking at jobs. Why can't these people come up with the money to make a Pee Wee Golf Course? Why can't they build a bowling alley? It's not the old boys anymore doing and not doing. It's us as taxpayers saying, "You guys need to look at our future. This is not the county to make a marijuana industry." I'm sorry. Talk to people in Colorado. I have many friends in Colorado, and they are regretting their decisions, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to state your name or sign in? Gina Gonzalez? Thank you.
I think county, Topeka County.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You've already... They do not have to, and I've given them an option, but...
She should say that.
She did.
Multiple times.
She did say that.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sheriff Pivacilio. I had one of the planning commissioners come to me and ask for some statistics on the dispensaries that we have in our county. So I have some numbers for you. We have three dispensaries in our county, and this is just current from this year. We've had a total of 24 alarm calls to these dispensaries. We've had two burglaries at different dispensaries out of the three. Two of them were burglarized. We've had four calls for service for disputes of some type. We've had two forgery calls, calls for forgery at one collective. They received probably, I don't know what they were, whether it was counterfeit money or bad checks or what it was. We've had one petty theft, one grand theft, three harassment calls. One person was under the influence that was arrested, and a couple of 911 missed dials out of those facilities. And again, those aren't specific to one, those are just generalized over all three. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. We appreciate that data.
Any other information you need while I'm here?
The sound of those numbers sounds quite high, but probably a stupid question. What about a general business, retail, a drugstore, grocery store? What sort of numbers do you get from them?
Well, actually, if you want to put it in perspective, the foothill pharmacy has been burglarized, I think, four times this year alone.
Hold on, please, 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 if you could keep it...
We get numerous alarm calls, and the alarm calls are just, who knows what causes the alarms to be tripped. We get there and typically, the scenes are secure. There's no break-ins. Phone lines operate a lot of these alarm systems, and they have issues, especially when it's raining. We get a lot of alarm calls, not only from businesses, but from residences when the weather becomes inclement, again, because of the water problems. People's heaters turn on and Venetian blinds will blow whether they're in a business again or in a residence, and that trips a motion detector so an alarm call comes off. But relatively speaking, the dispensaries, we really don't have a lot of issues with the dispensaries.
They have a lot of issues?
We do not have...
Do not have a lot of issues?
A lot of issues with our dispensaries. We have had, the one here in town has had a couple of events that we weren't real pleased with, but according to co-compliance and planning, that they were within their right to do what they did.
Sheriff, over what period of time were those numbers you gave us referring to?
These are from the beginning of this year, January 1 to current.
Do you know what the maximum canopy size is for any of these existing grows, what they actually have?
I'm not aware of them having any facilities to grow within their facilities. I believe that they're getting their product from outside of the area. Whether it's outside of Calaveras County, I don't know. I can't give you an honest answer. I don't know whether they're getting their product from, but I don't believe that they have bigger grows inside. Their buildings are all fairly small. I would imagine they can't be grown, if they're grown inside their facility, more than about 300 square feet. And those are just guesstimate numbers. I don't know those for a fact.
Do you have any view on whether there might be more issues or worse issues if the dispensaries... If the dispensaries were permitted to also sell for recreational purposes?
I don't know that they're not now. I can't imagine.
I mean legally?
Legally, I don't know that, I think they're going to see more foot traffic if they're able to advertise that they can use their dispensary for recreational. Whether it's going to cause any more problems, I can't foresee. I don't have a crystal ball. I wish I did.
This is off the subject that you brought up, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I mean, my next question is off the subject that you came to speak about, but maybe you can give us an idea. Have you experienced enforcement issues yet, to a greater extent, with the illegal grows as opposed to the registered grows?
I haven't had, we haven't had to deal with any registered growers in a criminal status at this point. Anything that's been criminal has been either a unregistered grow or a grow that they attempted to register and they were denied.
If a, if a ban were instituted, do you have any estimate as to how long it would take you to get rid of all of the grows, given the level of existing resources that you have?
That's a loaded question, Commissioner Wooster. I have been saying, since this whole project started, that whether you ban it or whether it's regulated, it's going to take three to four years to get a handle on it. I go to the analogy that alcohol was legalized years ago, but yet there's still moonshiners running around. You're never going to get rid of the illegal element, because there's too much money to be made. So to say that we'll be able to get rid of all of it, that's unrealistic. To get a handle on it, to where I feel comfortable in saying, okay, we have a handle on what's going on in our county, it's going to take three to four years, either way.
Thank you.
Are you scheduled to speak to us later?
No, sir. That's why I'm here now. I have an appointment. I will not be able to make it tomorrow. So if you have questions, ask them out, Commissioner Vassili. I'll be out of town tomorrow, so I won't be around, is my point.
I would take this opportunity.
Okay. Since the sheriff is not going to be able to be here, is your question simple and short?
Very simple and short.
No.
And so was his.
How many grows, since we have aerial views of the county, how many illegal grows do we really have? Have you got any handle on that?
Okay. I'm sorry, but you, if you could repeat his question, and then you're done. Thank you. Thank you.
He asked, how many illegal grows are we aware of? The problem with that is, we know there are approximately 600 illegal grows through GIS. The problem with that is that that doesn't include anything that might be inside of a building. That doesn't include anything that might be under canopy that we can't see. So that's a rough estimate, and I would say that it's low. How low, I don't know. I don't think we have 4,000 or 5,000 grows, which I've heard. That I don't believe. But there are more, if you were going to ask me, my personal opinion is there's probably about 1,200 illegal grows.
Was that 1,200?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, do you have an estimate, or do you have any sources of money to help you police the cannabis activities from either the state or the federal government?
We get a grant from the DEA. It's a $30,000 grant right now, but that is basically earmarked for federal lands. What we're seeing is because we have legal cannabis in the county, that they're moving off of our federal lands and into private industry. Somebody had mentioned earlier about the state of emergency in Siskiyou County. You've got to remember, Siskiyou County is about 80% federal lands up there. We are not. We're maybe 20% federal lands, where they can actually grow, because of the elevation and the climate that they're going to impact when they get to those areas. We do receive that $30,000. It was more than that in years past, but as things have changed through the feds, for whatever reason, that cost has gone down to about $30,000. And I can eat up $30,000 in a couple of days with overtime in, you know, with the amount of grows that we've been doing.
What about the state?
We're not getting anything from the state right now. We do get help from them. As everybody's aware of Operation Terminus, they gave us, Fish and Wildlife helped us, water quality helped us. Those are all state agencies. The National Guard, or the California National Guard helped us. So they're supplying assistance when we need it and when we request it. But as far as giving me money in the, into the funding, there's not.
So your position then is that you would like to get the funds to enforce whatever rules are out there if we allow?
I told the Board of Supervisors, and it sounds kind of hilarious, is, show me the money. Whether you ban it or whether you regulate it, the board needs to show me the money so I can continue. I'm not going to stop doing what we're doing because they ban it or they regulate it. That's not going to change. My job is to protect this county, and that is to protect the registered growers and the regular citizen, that is, non-growers. My job is to protect all of them. State of California has said that marijuana is legal in this state right now, so my job is to protect everybody. And I hear all the time that I'm a constitutional officer, and the federal government says it's illegal, but you know what? The Cole memo, 2013, the fed said, we're out. So they've relieved me of that constitutional obligation. I fall back to the state, and I have to do what the state says. Until the feds change that, I can't change it.
Do you have any thoughts on the alternatives that are being proposed, especially one of the specific items I've seen discussed and brought up again with Commissioner Lash's latest submission, is the minimum size, minimum lot size for various parcels? Do you have any opinions on that?
No, sir, I do not.
You might take a flyer there. You came in after I distributed, right? You can study.
All the alternatives from you, Tim? Okay. Yeah, again, I don't have an opinion, because my job is to protect everybody. It's up to the Board of Supervisors and the people in this community to decide what they want. You tell me what you want to do, and that's what I'm going to enforce. That's my job.
Okay. So the only other question I have is that, as far as response times when we have registered grows that are down dirt roads, off the beaten path, the impacts on the sheriff's department in that respect?
I'm not sure.
In the EIR, it talks about registered grows that should be paved roads, county, state highways, and versus you having to take your patrol cars way out in the boonies whenever...
Well, if we have a domestic violence out in the middle of the boondocks, I have to respond to that, too.
Okay.
That's just part of our job. That's why we have four-by-fours, and that's why we're buying trucks now instead of so many sedans, so that we can get to these outlying areas safely and effectively.
Because I allowed Mr. Wilson, he has a tendency to cause problems at every meeting, because he always wants to speak when it's not public time, but I let him go, and I've got several people raising their hands behind you that have a question. So I do want to give those people an opportunity to also ask a question. I think Prepona had his hand up first.
Yes, they can.
Talk loud, so they can hear.
Rick, I'm going to have you repeat.
Actually, just come up to the, just come up and ask.
Well, I don't know if the sheriff can answer this, or somebody else, but I'd like to know how many abatements have taken place this year under the abatement program? And do we know how much it's cost so far?
Okay, thank you.
I would have to get with co-compliance to find out how many total we've done under 806, and the costs, I don't know. I can't, that's a tough one. The problem is with, and I will say this publicly, with the issues that Rebecca Callen and I have had in separating things out, it makes it a little bit more difficult to track exactly what the total costs are going to be.
Do we know how many so far?
I can, I could tell you how many eradications the sheriff's office has done under search warrants. Right now, we're at about 35, but I'm not sure how many we've done under 806 total.
Okay. Want a mic? We can't lift those. Okay, you have to stand in line, because I have people ahead of you.
Using the civil abatement process, 170 sites have been eradicated. Only 12 of those were county eradicated. The rest were all voluntarily eradicated, and the eradications were verified by code enforcement officers.
How many were?
170.
No, but how many were eradicated by itself?
Oh, all but 12.
Thank you. Okay, Gina was, I'm sorry, but Gina was, I'm sorry?
I asked me to repeat that, please.
Okay, can you repeat your answer?
Yeah, 170 citations resulted in abatements, and 12 of those were abatements that were carried out by the county with warrants. The rest were all voluntarily abated, either within the 10-day timeframe required by the citation, or shortly thereafter.
Okay, Gina, please.
Sheriff, I have a question. You say that there's no federal funding, right?
I didn't say that. We get $30,000.
Okay, we got $30,000, right? Okay, so let's say we ban it. We erase the slate. It's illegal. Calaveras County has put down the hammer. Doesn't the government come in and say, well, you now have done this, now we will come in and help you? That's a false statement.
Yes. I've talked to the DOJ, and the problem is, we go back to the state of California, and said that you've made it legal, so we're out. Whether we ban it or not, they're not going to help us, because the state as a whole has made it legal. And I'll say it again, I've said this before, if you can find somebody that will dispute that from a federal government, and will tell me, hey, we'll give you money, please tell them to call me. Because I can't get an answer from anybody that says that they will. Everything I get is that they won't.
Okay. I'm going to let him go, and then we'll come over to you.
Thank you. Broadcast this again. Again, if you get a chance to piggyback on the last question.
Brock, can I interrupt you for just one second? Because I've allowed questions of the sheriff, which I think is an important role in us making decisions here today, so I have allowed it. If you want to speak, could you please line up behind the mic, so that we, me going like this is not real fair? I'm getting people out of order, and I don't like to do that. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks. I began in May with a public records request of the Bureau of Medical Cannabis at the time. I'd been corresponding with an attorney. They immediately went to an attorney. And we've gone back and forth. I hope the outside counsel will know who that is. It's a hyphenated last name, Reese Crowley. That's who I'm communicating with. I've asked him very specific questions, and I want to, on a number of subjects, but this is one in particular. I've asked him for any documents, proposed or finalized, that would...
I'm going to cut you off. I'm here to answer a question. I have another appointment to go to. There's a lot of people. If you have a direct question for me, ask it.
Direct question. They have no written regulation that says this, but Prop 64 specifies that 20% of money taken in in taxes in 2018 must be used for eradication. If we choose to ban, do we forfeit that percentage, our percentage of that 20%?
That's not technically a question for the sheriff. That's what we're going to be reviewing here today.
Well, he should be looking into that.
He's here for the law enforcement aspect of it. If you want to answer it, fine, but I don't want to get off into him answering EIR questions, because that's not why we're here.
I'm just trying to find out if the sheriff thinks that a ban would mean that we'd lose money that we would otherwise get or not. Because I can't get an answer from DMR.
He's not the auditor. He's not the controller. I don't know.
Okay.
Hi, Brad Wolfman from Angels Camp. Hi, Sheriff. I'm just curious, do you, we talk about if there's a ban, you know, and the lack of federal funding, and if we, we know if we regulate, we've already generated some funds, and they've already, you know, they do, if they're allocated by the board, they'll go to your department to help. Can you tell me, in your opinion, would you rather have a ban? Would your office, would your office be able to take care of the illegal grows better with a ban or with the regulation? Thank you.
Like I said before, whether we regulate or whether we ban it, my job is to keep the community safe, and we're going to continue to move forward in the direction that we're going as a sheriff's office now, and that's go after the illegal grows. If the registered growers become illegal because they banned it, then we will go after those. It's up to the Board of Supervisors to supply the funding for us to do our job.
Would it be easier, though?
I, the money, I don't deal with the money. All I do is have Rebecca Callen tell me how much I can spend. So you've got to talk to her.
Bill McManus, I have a question for the chair. Since this meeting has derailed.
Yep.
And we've gone from public comment into what is really considered kind of a staff report, back with more comments and questions from the audience, and we're not really back on item one of the agenda, which is 1795. If I make comments now, will I have an opportunity during the regular?
Okay, Bill, let me be really clear. All we were trying to do is, this is our only opportunity to have the sheriff before us, so we wanted to get questions out of the way that were pertinent.
I know.
And this is not comment time, period. This is, if you have a question that, that you need to get answered real quick, that will help us in our decision-making, ask a quick question, and let's get back on track.
If we're allowed to get through it, and I have questions.
You have your comment, period, yes, but I just want to make this quick question.
Okay. The quick question, actually, it'd be real quick. How many triple homicides have happened at a pharmacy? How many cases of human trafficking have happened at a grocery store? Those are things that we need to find out about, because if crime is so common, I'd like to know about it. And I distributed a letter regarding the dispensaries that was very recently issued by the sheriff's department on July 27th.
So, hold on.
Which says, please do not approve dispensaries, and that is from the sheriff's department on your letterhead. So who speaks for the sheriff's department, and how does all this work out? I reserve the balance of my time.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to do comments, okay? We just, if you have a specific question, ask a question, and we need to get back on track here. I should have never allowed this to get off course. You're in trouble.
My fault. My, I hate my life.
Go ahead.
I'm, I have heard from what I consider a very good source, that there are 4,000 and counting marijuana grows in Calaveras County.
He already answered that question, and he said he cannot validate that.
Okay, that's fine, but there's a difference of opinion from experts about that, and I want to make that known.
Then those experts should present reports to us as the commission to be looking at, and the supervisors. So I'm not going to pin this on the sheriff. If someone has a law enforcement question, not related to the EIR or anything, let's ask the specific question and keep moving on.
Well, how many tents do you allow to have in the front of houses in Calaveras County?
That's a co-compliance question.
Sheriff, in your best estimate, do you think that four years ago, we also had roughly 1,200 illegal grows and 700 registered, so a total of 1,900 grows going on in our county? Or do you feel that the explosion has actually happened over the last few years?
I don't know. I don't know what was hidden in the hills. We know that they've been here, so I can't give you an honest answer, realistically. I can't.
Okay.
I mean, I can guess, but I can't give you an honest answer.
Okay. One, I heard through one law enforcement officer, that probably four years ago, there was probably only about 100, but that, I don't know. Thank you. Thank you.
Sheriff DeVassilio, you mentioned the Department of Justice. I, too, have talked to them, and I also have talked to the DEA in Washington, DC. And basically, what they told me is that in 2009, Obama administration told the holder to look the other way on marijuana issues, which they did. They also told me at that time that the federal government is considering action against the states on marijuana, as they are on opioid addiction. My question to you is, did they tell you that when you talked to them? That they would be taking action, so that you could get the federal funding that is available? Because they... Because they told me funding is available. If the sheriff's office and the Board of Supervisors have a ban in place, they qualify for the funds. Did they tell you that?
They did not tell me that, and that goes back to the two thousand thirteen Cole memo, when they basically said, "We're out", because the state of California, and Oregon, and Washington, and the other states have decided to have commercial, or legal marijuana. And if you listen to what the Fed said, they are, they are not going after the medicinal side. They are going to try and stop the recreational side. So you need to be very clear when you, when you ask them their questions, and what they're talking about. Jeff Sessions has said that, that, and I haven't talked to him personally, but I've talked to his staff, and the staff says, he's going after the recreational side, not the medical side. And again, like I've told Bill, I've told a lot of people, if you have a phone number of somebody that I can contact for federal funding, send it to me. I have yet to see somebody send it to me.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Sheriff DeBasilio. I'm wondering, given your experience as the sheriff of the county, do you believe that it is reasonably foreseeable that the number of grows will go down in the context of a ban? Or will it go up? That's my only question.
I don't have an answer for that. Again, my job is to go after the ones that are not supposed to be here. And they're going down. I know that when we did Operation Terminus, some of the places that we were going to hit, when we went to go to them, they had already self-eradicated, because they didn't know if we were coming for them or not. And that's the direction we're gonna continue to go. So, I'm, back to that four-year plan. Within three to four years, I do expect the numbers to decline.
Okay, last question, and then we're gonna take a break.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that there was a number for cannabis requests for help. How many do you get? How many calls do you get regarding cannabis cultivation?
That I don't have. I don't have those statistics here. I don't know.
I have a feeling that most people don't even bother to call. And I know that, in some cases, people are afraid to call.
And I agree. There are a lot of folks that have not called, but there yet are a lot that do call now, too.
Anyway, I think you have a real tough job. Thank you.
Sheriff DeBasilio, thank you for coming and answering the questions. And I think now we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order, and we are gonna continue with our public comment. So if you have not yet had an opportunity to speak, now is. We appreciate it when you state your name and sign in. It is not mandatory, but just making that clear. And if you want to speak, come to the mic. Mic.
I just want to ask you a question. We'll have, it was still five minutes each?
Yes.
And also, will we be allowed to speak once today and the remainder? Once only, or will it be-
It'll be once today.
Okay.
So you have five minutes in a little bit. Or right now, if you'd like.
Well, Madam Chair, we have, we're talking about the regulatory ordinance. We also, the item four is the, so there'd be an opportunity to speak on the dispensary ordinance as well, as a separate hearing.
My name is Joyce Tekel, I'm with MyValleySprings.com. I have a question around number seven on Mr. Lattish's handout on alternative four. I couldn't figure out what that was referring to. Are you talking about like a campus, or are there going to be growers that are individually licensed, that will grow on a particular parcel of ground? I, my mind went all different directions.
I'm not gonna be answering your question-
Yeah.
-but if you state what you think would be good, that's what I'm after, is, is public input.
I would like to see the growing out of the residential areas. But I do believe there are areas in the county where it could be grown, where pot could be grown. I do, I do accept that. I'm not sure how that would be accomplished. And this, this number seven started me thinking about a lot of different possibilities, but I didn't reach any clarity. I was really glad to see the two-hundred-foot setback. That, I think, is a vast improvement over what's been going on up to now. The other thing I was glad to see was on the water trucks, that they were included in the traffic discussion. I did turn in comments on that. I didn't feel the answers I got to my comments were adequate. And this water truck discussion was totally new. I didn't even think about that in my comments. And you're right on, that not only are they, would they be constant, but they're trucks on the dirt roads, on our, on our inadequate roads. That's, what I said in my comments was, any additional traffic is consequential, because our roads are in such bad shape right now. So it has to be addressed. I'm not saying, "Don't grow". I'm saying, "You have to consider the consequences. You have to consider the impacts." And I don't feel this EIR does. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further public comment?
Bill McManus, I think before we discuss the future of regulation, maybe a little bit of context for the history of regulation. Back in two thousand and fifteen, after the Butte Fire, we discovered that there was a lot of marijuana growing. We asked the Board of Supervisors to do something about it, and the historic and stunning decision, they voted five to zero to do nothing. Four of those supervisors are gone, one is still there, that was part of that five. We hope to remedy that after the first of the year. Right after that, the urgency, the first version of the urgency ordinance came in that was completely deficient, and then it had to go to a second version, which, and there was a six-week gap between those two effective dates. In that period of time, we saw growing explode exponentially. According to sources that I have, official sources, in two thousand and fifteen, there were a thousand grows. Two thousand and sixteen, there were two thousand grows, that doubled. Between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, there were four thousand grows. It has doubled again. Regulation has been proven not to work. No matter what you do, you can't regulate this. Now, on top of all the problems, and we've heard them for a couple of years, barking dogs and generators, and you name it. All sorts of problems out there, public nuisances. Now, there's a new problem out there, and it, it doesn't make noise like a dog. It doesn't smell like pot. It doesn't taste necessarily like anything you'd recognize. And that is the advent and discovery of huge amounts of chemical contamination within our county. It's odorless, it's tasteless, it's invisible, and yet it's there. And the EIR did not address chemical pollutions at this level. They talked about scenic vistas and greenhouse gases from generators. They didn't talk about furadan being found on sites. They didn't talk about water supplies being ruined. They didn't talk about dead dogs around a stock pond that had been infected from surrounding grows. They didn't address any of that. And if they had, I'm afraid they probably would have said that was less than significant. For the people who live in this county and have to deal with that, who depend on surface water, it is a lot more than significant. And by allowing this to go on, you are unleashing an environmental disaster on this county. And who's gonna pay for that? According to the, the Public Works Department, the Butte Fire, per site, recovery cost was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's for approximately two thousand square feet of a house. What's twelve thousand square feet of a canopy in a, in a pot growth that's gone bad? How much is that gonna cost? If you talk with the Superfund people in Sacramento, most hazmat expenses for marijuana cleanup can exceed one million dollars per event. If you take a look at, at the report that I gave you from Dr. Gabriel, the final performance report, you will see the disaster that results from growing marijuana, especially in rural counties like ourselves. We are small, we are fragile, we don't have much enforcement. Our funds are limited, but help is out there if we do it. If we ban, we become at least, we can at least have a place at the table to ask for help. Without a ban, no federal or state agency is gonna come in and clean up our mess. I've been told that repeatedly. I have asked the Board to work with the sheriff to get in with HIDAT, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area down in the Valley. Once we have a ban, they have lots of grants available to help us get rid of this problem. We're not on our own. As long as we have regulation and allow it, we are on our own. And when these environmental things start going south on us big time, with a lot of them, we are on our own. Who's gonna pay for that? And how do you explain to people that they are living in a contaminated county when they came up here for the pristine environment and a way of life, to get out of it in the cities? You explain to them why they have to deal with that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Anna Stepp. I am a thirty-year US Air Force veteran, retired. I am a nurse. I'm a grower. I know how to follow regulations. I was here when the sheriff was speaking about what was going on in our county. Sounds very different from what the previous gentleman said. So I just want to make you aware that maybe we need to listen to what our county officers have to say about what's actually going on in the county. The illegal grow pictures that I've seen are horrendous, and they're horrible. They're not on illegal grow. I've been to several legal grows, including my own. We don't use pesticides. We don't use ardenticides. We don't use insecticides of any kind. I don't see how there can be contamination accusations when I don't even use that in my own vegetable garden. So, I would like you guys to think about that not everything is, you know, we all come up here with our research and what's going on. I invite you to my farm. Come and look at it. And you will see, it is run very similar to the way I ran a unit. I ran a, I was chief nurse of a rescue wing here in California. I ran that. I had, whenever we had an inspection, we had outstanding ratings. I trained my employees the same standards that I trained my soldiers and my airmen below me. So please, consider the fact that the majority of the legal growers do not look like those pictures that you're visualizing. Come on out to my farm, I invite you. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I guess it's afternoon, I don't know what time it is. But anyway, welcome. And my name is Mike Gonsman, I live in Wallace, California.
I'm sorry, Mike, you're gonna have to speak a little closer to the mic, because we're having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. Mike Gonsman, Wallace, California.
Okay.
Let me write that down here. And my, my issues are basically involved around environmental, the lady that just spoke. Quite frankly, she may be accurate as far as what she said, she doesn't use chemicals. But I don't believe that's the case mainstream. I think that there's a lot of chemicals being dumped on our environment up here. And Dr. Gabriel speaks of that, and you have his letter there, it shows, it tells you about that. But the bottom line is that we've got reservoirs here that supply water for people in the Bay Area. And if we, if they find that those chemicals have made their way into their water well, into their water sources, and they will, they will, it's just a matter of time. We're gonna see lawsuits here that you can't believe. I mean, these lawsuits, you know, either way that this goes, whether growers lose, or the people that are opposed to growing lose, or whatever happens, there's gonna be some lawsuits. We all know that. And, but those lawsuits will be minor compared to what you're gonna see if we contaminate these reservoirs, and it will happen. One thing, I, I gotta apologize, I tried to apologize to the sheriff. It's kind of ironic that the sheriff talked about a, a local business, a pharmacy, an upstanding business, in the Rancho Calaveras area that was robbed four times here recently. And I found it ironic that a half a dozen or a dozen people over here applauded when he said that. I don't know, something wrong with that. Anyway, one thing is that, as far as taxes are concerned, too. The growers talk about how much money we're gonna inherit here in our county, and we're gonna be able to do all these things. But what I'd like to know is, if that's the case, why is it that the taxes have been sent out to all these growers, some eight million dollars, or a little over eight million dollars? I don't have the exact numbers, I didn't have that much time to prepare for this. And out of that eight million, a little over five million have actually been collected. Now, if they're such upstanding citizens, people that are different from the ones that are growing illegally, or illegal, legal, whatever, you can call it what you want. In my opinion, all of them, no matter who they are, they're here for one reason, and one reason only, and that's to reap the harvest. They could care less what they do to our environment. And I think it's a crying shame that if we let a handful of people in our community dictate the environmental future of our county, you cannot let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please, can we, I asked them not to clap, I have to make it across the board, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any other further public comment?
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners and County Staff. My name is Jack Norton. I'm the co-leader of a group called the Calaveras County Cannabis Stakeholders Group. And I, like many of the people here, came to this great county seeking a certain way of life. I live in San Andreas, I'm a registered farmer in District One. And today, I'm gonna speak about the importance of using public meetings as a component of the legislative vetting process, and about our, our stakeholders' desires for the regulatory process as a whole, while my colleagues will dive into specific issues we'd like to talk about on the EIR itself. In Alameda County, where I'm a member of the Alameda County Cannabis Stakeholders Group, the task of crafting Malkursa commercial cannabis legislation has involved approximately seventy public meetings. In Sonoma County, there's been over thirty meetings there. And in the Triangle, Emerald Triangle, there's been about sixty. These aren't just board meetings or board subcommittees, these are town halls, planning commissions, and other venues. And as an observer and participant to a majority of those meetings in Alameda County, I was able to see the public perceptions change with their level of engagement, from some of the fear and apprehension we hear today, to more cautious optimism and opportunity. Certainly now, Alameda County is different than Calaveras County, but the public still has that desire to be informed, just the same. Public meetings like this one engage the local population, make them feel informed and included, give a chance for their concerns to be voiced and responded to. Calaveras County has spent a lot of time and resources crafting the local regulation, working on this issue. And the cannabis farmers here have likewise spent countless hours and dollars trying to comply with state and local regulations that are constantly changing and evolving ahead of the official rollout date of January first, two thousand and eighteen. To the general public, those who aren't involved in county regulation, and those who aren't cannabis farmers, the amount of work and preparation that the county and stakeholders have done is not always obvious. So these public meetings allow interested parties to see the evolution of regulation. Now, as, as stakeholders, we have some suggestions of things that we'd like to see. One of those is a process that is clear and transparent, the, through the permitting process. Some suggestions for that would be like a checklist, or project milestones through the permitting process, to, to make it more transparent, where it's been somewhat opaque. And also, we've noticed that there's new hires in the planning department, and we appreciate that, but believe that that's not enough. More staff should be hired to have a robust and properly regulated cannabis program. And finally, we are, we are deeply concerned as stakeholders with the anticipated legal costs that the county could incur, should the Board develop a ban. County dollars should go towards much-needed county services, not litigation over cannabis. To that end, we would request an analysis or a fee study to speak to what that cost would be to defend the county from an onslaught of litigation that could come from a ban. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
County Marijuana Stakeholders Group, and wanted to talk a little bit about the Project EIR objectives. From the Calaveras County Scoping Meeting, July 21st, 2016, those objectives were laid out. Number one, comprehensive regulation of premises within the county used for marijuana cultivation or commercial activities related to marijuana. Two, to maintain the health, safety, and well-being of the county, its residents, and the environment. Three, to minimize the risks of and complaints regarding fire, odor, pollution caused by unregulated cultivation of marijuana within the county. And four, to protect the county's surface and groundwater resources by reducing the discharge of sediments, pesticides, fertilizers, petroleum, harbor carbohydrates, trash, and human waste. In the draft EIR, there was a change in the scope of the EIR to include the wording to prohibit the uses within the constraints of the state. So there was a change in the scope of the EIR that differed from what was presented on the July 21st meeting. If you look at the two different number-one lines there, there was an addition to the scope of the EIR. I just wanted that to be made aware, that that change was made. And yeah, just wanna thank all you guys for your time. I know that Mr. Mowers, you know, has been inundated and overwhelmed, and we would hope that we can get the additional resources to the county to implement a plan and a program that we can work with and bring the two sides together to find common ground. So, thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Crystal Kisi, District 1. I have a registered farm in Burson. I'm also a 25-year veteran, California field biologist, and run an environmental consulting firm that has been working with farmers to come into compliance in local and state regulations since they were enacted in August of 2015. That's when the first cannabis environmental regulations were enacted by the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. And so, I have a lot of experience with SEQA documents and SEQA analysis. And one of the discourses that I've been hearing from the community is that a ban is an environmentally superior alternative to regulations. And I just wanted to talk about, in reference to SEQA projects in general. SEQA analysis is for a preferred project. And when this whole operation started, the preferred project were the draft regulations that the previous board had enacted. And so, quite often, there is always an environmentally superior project, either a no-action alternative, or an activity that...where you do less of an activity will be an environmentally superior alternative. However, there's a tool that you use in the analysis called mitigation, and that is to reduce the impacts of the preferred alternative to less than significant. And so, mitigation is land use regulation enacted by local jurisdictions for specific projects, usually based upon recommendations from subject matter experts and regulatory agencies. Those are the expert opinions and legal. And the results of technical studies performed for the preferred project EIR analysis. And that's the math and science behind the decisions that you, as a planning commission, can make to the Board of Supervisors. And so, what I'm suggesting is that we haven't really examined the mitigation that we can enact as a local jurisdiction to reduce the impacts of a regulated industry in this community. I don't feel that the math and science behind the staff recommendation or staff direction to enact a ban is...has been adequately studied from a scientific standpoint. And so, I'm going to affirm my colleagues in the Stakeholders Group's suggestion that a fee study or analysis be conducted on the consequences of unregulated cannabis as a result of a ban. And then, the other point I wanted to bring up is that Ascent Environmental did both the Humboldt County EIR and the Calaveras County EIR, and the conclusions of a ban alternative are quite different in both. And I just wanted to read the conclusions to you. In the Humboldt EIR, they state, "This alternative is not considered to be feasible. It would not be consistent with the objectives of the proposed ordinance, which allow and regulate legal cannabis activities and address the environmental impacts of historic unregulated cannabis cultivation in the county." That's from Humboldt. A ban in the Calaveras EIR says, "This alternative would comprehensively regulate cannabis within the county and seek to maintain the health, safety, and well-being of county residents and the environment." So you have, like, basically diametrically opposed conclusions of the same type of regulation, non-regulation, in the form of a ban. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today and allowing us an opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Prepona Randall Smith. I'm here also representing the Calaveras Cannabis Stakeholders Group and District 3, Registered Grower. There's two things I want to discuss. One is, I just want to quickly review what Mr. Mowers already shared, and that is that there are presently in the final EIR four alternatives. One is the do-nothing project. The second is, of course, the ban. And then you have minimum parcel sizes with further reduced zoning...no, with reduced zoning designations. And Alternative 3, removing RR, which according to the EIR would result in 25% reductions from our current levels. Then Alternative 4 is a minimum parcel sizes and further reduced zoning designations, removes RR, RA 10-acre minimum. U must rezone. RA and U must conduct project-level environmental reviews, 200-foot setbacks, and a 45% reduction. Now, as you look at these alternatives, there's a number of things you can do with this. You can adopt Alternative 3. You can adopt Alternative 4. You can adopt a hybrid of it. If you think 4 is too stringent, you can maybe go with 3 and use some items from 4. You have a lot of leeway here that's available to you. Now, one of the ideas which we want to prooffer here today, as a compromise measure, is a concept called colocation. And as we know, local jurisdictions are tasked with determining land use, such as parcel sizes, license type and size, and the facility requirements. And it is also true that the state will allow up to four cultivation licenses per parcel, up to four. So Yolo County, for instance, is considering up to two licenses for anything up to...that's at least 100 acres. We would suggest up to four licenses on properties in excess of 100 acres. And the benefits, gets it out of the neighbors' eyes, ears, and noses, maintains and increases the excise tax. The more that they get in, the greater the excise tax for Measure C. And also helps law enforcement in terms of knowing where they are. And so, what this would do, colocation would provide an alternative opportunity for cultivators who may be zoned out by the more stringent regulations. That is the FEIR. Alternative 3 and 4 removes cultivation from RR. We know that a lot of currently registered permitted growers are in RR. And so, colocation will allow some of them to stay in business by leasing from larger parcel owners who may otherwise have unproductive lands. So if someone's out there sitting on empty land that's 1,000 acres or over 100 acres, they could possibly let out a portion of their property, as we recommend, up to four acres. And this could be a nice compromise to include mitigation measures, take care of the neighbors' legitimate concerns, and allow us to have a regulated industry that could actually benefit the entire community. Regulation means benefit. And I just want to mention one last thing. I don't want to be pointing fingers at anybody, but what we heard today, that a ban means you get funding, and a no ban means you don't. It's the opposite. With a ban, you get no funding from the state. Nada. You're on your own. With regulation, you get funding from the state. It's that simple. Cannabis dollars will not flow to banning communities. It just doesn't pass the smell test, so to speak. So I thank you so much for your consideration, and if you have any questions, we are all here to be of service. Thank you.
I'm with Alameda County Board of Supervisors. I am the Cannabis and Technology Advisor for Supervisor Nate Miley and the County of Alameda. I'm also a member of California State Association of Counties, CSAC, for the record. I'm on the CSAC Working Group. I am also a part of the CSAC Cannabis and Department of Technology for Track and Trace. I've been on this policy for about 20 years, and I feel I'm a subject matter expert, at least the County of Alameda feels that way. That being said, Patricia Brooks...who is Patricia Brooks? Patricia Brooks is a United States veteran. Patricia Brooks serves her county and her country. I start with saying, you have a huge responsibility today, as well as the Board of Supervisors does as well. Your responsibility is to the county of Calaveras. That's everyone. That's the growers, that's the non-growers, that's the business entities. And so, I've come today representing, again, our President, Supervisor Keith Carson of CSAC, Supervisor Miley. Instead of the hyperbole about what dangers persist, other counties...and when I say other counties, I caucus with rural counties. So this is not the Alameda County saying this. This is the rural counties saying this. What other rural counties have found is that the best way to counteract hyperbole, rumors, suggestions, are to rely actually on the subject matter experts that holds that information, and that happens to be the sheriff. The stakeholders have said today that we need more public meetings. Now, I'm very proud...the state of California is very proud of Alameda County. Now, the industry would probably not say so, but we've held over 70/70 public meetings. And when the community felt that they were not satisfied, they asked for us to go out again and do more public meetings, upon which we did. Again, the industry was not very happy with that, but we did. That's missing in Calaveras County. As I sit here and listen to the very, very good people of this county, here's what I hear. These people, us against them, insiders versus outsiders, potheads versus legal growers, those are all divisive terms, simply meant to divide this fantastic county. I believe we all can do better. We've done better. We've done better in Humboldt, Siski, Sonoma, not just your urban counties, in fact, indeed, your rural counties. I want to respect your willingness, Commissioner, to allow the sheriff to speak, because the sheriff is actually a very vital person. Their role in this cannabis program, they're vital. They're a stakeholder. They're at the table. In our counties and other counties that I caucus with, the sheriff is at the table. I was responsible for taking over 60 members of our county down to Monterey County to meet with 40 members of their teams. We toured two farms, had a nice lunch, and sat down with their enforcement, and we brought our law enforcement down with us. We are partners in this program. So let's pause and dispel rumor from innuendo from fact. The state's rights versus the federal government, and the sheriff was absolutely correct with the cold memo. This is about the state of California, and this is indeed the law.
You have less than a minute.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You know, normally, we have a little clicker there. Did you see me looking for the clicker?
I know, but we came here for the crowds.
No worries, no worries. When we think about money in this county, I want to be clear that everyone's saying, "Oh, the cannabis money, the cannabis money, the cannabis money." That's indeed not where you'll pull your money from. You will pull your money down out of SB 94. Take a look at that. $10 million to be dispersed. $10 million to be dispersed into programs. This is indeed where you pull your money down. It is elusive to say that this will all come from cannabis. What you do know, what you can count on, is true what our stakeholders said. And rural counties don't like it. Either you're in or you're out. If you're in, you get money for enforcement, 20% on top from that $10 million pull-down. If you're not, you don't get anything. One second, please, if you don't mind.
I can't. I had to cut everybody else off.
No worries. That being said, we are asking you to think about reasonable regulatory...
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Just what you just said...
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner.
The acoustics aren't really very good.
No problem.
But are you saying that if you regulate, there is more money available, and if you don't regulate, if you ban, there is not?
Commissioner, that is absolutely correct. So, how the state has...
And where would this money come from?
So, the money's coming from...the money that goes from all of these people that ask for licensure and taxes at the state level, right? The commissioner, as well as the governor, already signed into law, because some will say...
I'm gonna cut us both short. Basically, from the state, is that what you're saying?
From the state, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you all.
My name is Ann Hill from McCullumney Hill.
Okay, I'm gonna have to have you speak into the mic, 'cause we can't hear you. There we go.
My name is Ann Hill from McCullumney Hill, and I just have a few words, and that is ban the cannabis and the dispensaries. It's a very bad product. On the whole, growers are not responsible. They kill the wildlife, they pollute the soil, they pollute the water. Last I heard, our district attorney had 11 cases to prosecute, and she didn't have any money to prosecute them, so they're just sitting there. The tax money is a joke, and we all know that. It won't pay for the needs of the county. Our county actually needs 50 to 100 officers to babysit the growers, because they are not responsible. They steal water tanks, they steal water, they steal cars, they steal big equipment. And now they're dumping household goods on our roads. And they're dumping them over the banks and right on the roads themselves. We already have the butte fire burn scars to look at. Now, in the burn scars, we're looking at their garbage. That's really irresponsible. The majority of the people of this county have told you over and over that we do not want ban...we want it banned. We do not want pot here, growing in our county. So please ban the pot, please ban the dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello? Jim, Calaveras citizen. Explosion of pot grows. Calaveras has demonstrated little or no control over pot grows, so it's reasonable to expect continuing flood of people to keep coming here and grow pot because of this. These growers have continued to overwhelm our county and our resources. As it is true today, a substantial number of those people will not comply with whatever regulations the county puts in place. It's cash business. The marijuana business is a cash business that has two consequences. Number one, difficulty enforcing any scheme to tax the growers. And number two, the existence of large amounts of cash, which tends to attract criminals. This on top of temptation to steal the pot itself, as it has happened, but it's being suppressed, especially by the Calaveras enterprise. Adverse effects. The influx of marijuana grows has escalated real estate prices for land whose growers are willing to sell them, for owners who are willing to sell them, while depressing the values of the surrounding properties. People who are not in the business are priced out of the market. Other adverse effects include increased traffic, especially heavy trucks, damaging county roads, illegal camping, raw sewage being dumped on the ground, trash, fires, crime, environmental contamination from pesticides, herbicides, et cetera. The vast majority of commercial pot growers do not have adequate insurance, commercial general liability, workers' compensation, pollution, et cetera. To protect the county and its citizens from damages caused by these grow operations, having the taxpayer to foot the bill, that's me, and you. Water thirsty crop. Growing marijuana requires a significant amount of water, according to the FEIR. For one outdoor half-acre grow, it is estimated at 390,000 gallons per grow season. Some growers are getting water illegally by diverting streams, tapping into ponds, reservoirs, and lakes. Some are even taking it from CCWD, which I know for a fact. Ever-increasing cultivation promises to dry up wells of those sharing the same underground source and potentially increase the cost of the CCW ratepayers. Conclusion: The ban alternative is the superior alternative. This is very costly giant experiment, and the experiment with people's lives and their property and their livestock. Please recommend a ban ordinance on all commercial marijuana activities to protect our county, our environment, our public health, safety, and welfare. A personal experience: The community I live in, I went down a road called Buckboard. Dead-end cul-de-sac. I turned around, came down, three cars, actually trucks, blocking the road. I was personally threatened never to come down that road again. There's a sheriff's report on it with the photographs with what occurred. They're still there, they're still making the threats. That's my personal experience. My other personal experience is that there's a pot grow that you guys just denied, okay? They're still camping there in tents now and in their cars, because they had to remove their campers. I wonder where they're going to the bathroom, where they're showering. And there's a school bus stop right next to it. It's not very inclusive for the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kurt von Putkamer. I'm a resident, too. I arrived here four years ago after the Great Recession. I am a licensed architect, certified land planner, and a general contractor. I'm painfully familiar with the EIR process and CEQA. And I want to expand on something that Director Mueller said to you in his report, and that was that it would be speculation on what a ban would do and the harm, but it's not speculation. The entire EIR process is all speculation. If in those 10 sites over there we killed the frog, we're going to do it on this site. It's all speculation. And EIR is nothing more than what these people do. I have not heard anybody in this room like the EIR. What this process is hoping to do today is not have everybody's little sitcoms about what their personal story is about pot growers or not. Your job today is to forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. That, I would ask that you forward a recommendation to give these folks enough money to revise the report, what they should have done the last time we authorized money, to go what a ban will be. This is not, this is a convoluted mess of a report. Not anything isn't. Has nothing to do with outdoor grows being highly offensive, has all these people talking about water. Doesn't even address the, it's... As an architect and consultant, I would have rejected that report. It is not adequate, and I think it's apparent, and I'd ask the Commissioners here to forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to give them enough money to do it right. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Peter, first of all, there's two things I don't talk about with anybody. Trump and cannabis. Just, there's no winning any argument with anybody you talk to about them, because everybody's got their own personal opinion. And I just want to say thank you for this today, because I'm very uneducated in this. I want to be educated in it. I want to voice a positive opinion, and you guys have a huge responsibility. So, I thank you for taking that. We've heard voices from everything on today. I'm not going to sit here and say yes, no, maybe so. But two things that I do want, that I did hear today that I would like to have repeated is that there appears to be many issues that are not addressed in that EIR. And the second thing I'd like to remind us all is that you're here to represent everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We still have four minutes left.
Hello. My name is Karen Hosa. I'm a registered grower in District 2. I want to thank you all for being here and listening to all of us, and I know it's your responsibility to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. I just want you to know that I am for regulation. I'm part of CCA. And as you've heard from the stakeholders and you've heard from CCA, lots of ideas on how we can come together and make something work that would be a compromise and be something that would allow both sides to find a way to work together, so that we can have this business in our county and have it be a positive experience for people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Dina Morris, Calaveras County. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Patricia Brooks for her service to our country. I come today representing the people who live in this county that are either working or they're too scared to come. And I'm not making up the "too scared to come." It's factual. I can't share their names for obvious reasons, okay? And I'm one of those people, but I speak, because somebody in my group has to. So, first of all, I'd like to talk about the generic answer that I received on the EIR groundwater tables. I addressed that issue, that our groundwater tables, many of them throughout Calaveras County, have a groundwater table of low to none. I got a generic response that it was advised that the county does some testing over a period of months to see if the water is being drawn down. When you're talking about an area that has low to none, three or four months could be the end of everyone else's wells around there that uses that same groundwater table. And it is a big issue. I know one area, Diamond 20, there are several residents in that area whose wells do dry up during the summer. But there are many, many commercial grows in that area. I also want to talk about the other industries that have been mentioned, wineries, et cetera, okay? Those industries, they typically have loans and bank accounts and assets that are secured by adequate insurance to protect their investments against damages arising from their operations. The vast majority of the commercial growers in this county, I can assure you, do not have adequate insurance coverage. The majority of them probably have paid cash for their land, so they're not required to even carry homeowner's insurance. So, who leaves, who foots the bill for those damages when they have no assets, no adequate insurance to cover any damages that they may have caused? I'd also like to say that the wineries, et cetera, don't attract thousands of illegal businesses here, okay? This particular industry, we all know that it attracts illegal businesses here and criminals and crime, et cetera. We've heard it time and time again. Our resources are overwhelmed and exhausted. I've been personally begging for help in my community since September, no, excuse me, since February of 2015. 2015. Everyone, or probably most everyone knows that I'm one of many grandparents who have been denied visits of their grandkids because of the situation that is in the community. And I forgot, one day, I was visiting one of my sons, and I said, "Hey, when are you going to bring the kids and come and visit me? You know, I have some horses, you know, we have all these fun things to do." And he's like, "Mom, really? When you don't have commercial marijuana grows on the left of you, and you don't have them on the right side of you, then I'll bring my kids to come and visit." But I've already experienced firsthand, with my children at your house, what these people are like, and I am not going to jeopardize my kid's safety. So, that's a fact. That's not a rumor, and that's not exaggerated. That's a fact. The other thing is, I'm getting a little tired of hearing the threats of strong-arming this county. If we don't get our way and you don't let us grow, we're going to sue you. They've been strong-arming this county for two years, and it's old. The county needs to stand up and say, "Well, you know, if that's what you think is going to get your way, then bring it on." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Levon Miller. I'm from Mountain Ranch, and I moved here four years ago to join my family, my brother, my father, my stepmother, who purchased land in Mountain Ranch. And we'd vacationed in Arnold all the years that we were growing up. We absolutely loved this county. It's been a goal of our family since the time I was quite little to be a part of this community. My father, who was a Christian therapist for over 30 years, prior to that, he was a general contractor. I spent the last 25 years in Oregon, obtained an agriculture and animal science degree, worked in veterinary medicine and with horse training, giving lessons, and struggled. In our current world, in order to make a living in either animal agriculture or agriculture, it's a tough market to break into. But our family took the risk to come here and be farmers. In order to live on the land, provide my parents a retirement, provide a home for my family to be able to raise my nephews and have a community and be a part of a wonderful community, we took a huge risk. We did it and came here to grow cannabis, because at the time, in 2013, this area was quite open and defaulted to the state regulation. There wasn't any permanent regulation here, and the talk on the street was that regulation was coming. After the fire, when we lost everything, we built a garden and a home and everything from the ground up, and we lost it all to the fire, had no income whatsoever for that year. Despite our plight of literally being burned out, burned to the ground, we had the option to move, we had the option to leave. But we saw our community embrace agriculture, provide us with a framework and an ordinance to follow, to be able to protect our environment, protect our citizens by generating taxes that would go to the general fund, that could in turn go to the sheriff, to be able to take care of the irresponsible growers. We have put everything we have to be active participants in this community and to help with our sweat, labor, and love to provide the funds necessary to remove the environmental degradation caused by illegal grows, to follow every bit of framework laid out for us, to be sure that the environment is absolutely protected, to place our grow in a location where it is not visible to anyone. We're not harming anyone. We're hardworking. We love our community. We are law-abiding. In light of the debate and the trend towards a ban, I've been exploring over the last six months the option of being able to either work in veterinary medicine again or open another horse training business, and I've taken some clients. In fact, in a few moments here, I have to leave to go attend a clinic out in Cockbaropolis. I've really put my feelers out. I do not want to leave Calaveras. And the fact of the matter is, on a personal note, taking all this that we're talking about out of the picture, the basic reality is that this community in this county that I love so much and I want to contribute to cannot support me unless we can keep farming. If I stick with vet med, my annual income would be less than $20,000 a year with a bachelor's degree and a certification as a veterinary technician. That's pretty pathetic. I can't retire on that. I'm 43 years old. I can't screw around with a $13-an-hour job anymore. So, if you would like to keep quality, educated, law-abiding, community-oriented families in this community, please regulate. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a show of hands of how many people left are here to speak, so we can decide? One? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody coming up to speak? I've seen hands.
Hi. My name is George Stevens, longtime resident of the Diamond 20s. And I want to urge you to recommend a ban. I think you're gambling- I think you're gambling with the short and long-term environmental impacts, drawing the water table down. According to Brian Moss, who used to run the Environmental Agency Department, he says the Diamond Twenties are the Diamond Twenties because of the water table. They didn't divide it up into five or one-acre parcels. They didn't think there was enough water to support it. So why would we allow a commercial enterprise into an area that already has a low-water table? I have no idea how much you take off the value of your house if you run out of water, but I suspect it probably starts about seventy percent off. You know, years ago, I'd, about three years ago into the drought, I'd spent about twenty-five thousand dollars developing a, a new well, because ours was, was slowing down. And yet, there's people in this area that are drawing vast quantities of water out of, out of the ground to, you know, support the growing of their marijuana. I keep hearing these people coming up, talking about being stakeholders. They're operating under a temporary ordinance. They knew that it was temporary, and it wasn't any guarantee. I don't think they should be termed as a stakeholders. Stakeholder is someone who has a legitimate, permanent claim on something, not obtaining something that's temporary and, and needed to be later voted on. So they did it on the come, just like real estate investors invest maybe in a area where they think maybe a shopping center or Walmart's coming in. It may come in, it may not, and they don't have a, they don't have a stake in the fact that the property that they speculated on is, is gonna go up. So I would strongly recommend you to, to ban this. It's bringing in a lot of crime, as I said before, pollution. At a county supervisors meeting a few months ago, a, a guy spoke who was hired from UC Davis, talking about the great economic impact, and one of the things he cited was the good wages of the, the people working the pot grows. Well, at the end of the growing season, they're driving the same ratty cars they were at the beginning of, of the season. Broken-out windows, three different color body panels or bo, body panels missing, no I don't think they're, these agriculture workers are necessarily being treated right. So anyway, I'll conclude just by saying I strongly urge a recommendation to, to ban commercial pot in our county. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Are we here?
Yeah.
I know it's a hard one, it's microphones. What, what is the zoning in Diamond Twenty?
It's rural residential.
It is rural residential, so, so under the, the third alternative and the fourth alternative, there would be no longer any pot forms?
I, I realize that.
Okay.
But I, I'd like to get this whole industry.
No, I think, you make a good point. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So I just want to poll the Commissioners real quick. When I asked for a show of hands, there's about maybe ten people, nine to ten. I'm sorry? So you want to go to lunch? Do the Commissioners want to go to lunch now in the, okay. So we'll call it quits, and we'll be back at one o'clock. Gina, you got your way.